Yeah, yeah, and then the intense was about double that. Is it 200 and 400?
But, but, uh, no.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, so they looked at that, and the intense one has even more of a traffic impact, obviously, and puts more pressure on our other arterials and intersections throughout the town. So, long answer to your short question, sorry about that.
No worries, thank you.
Anybody else? I have a couple that are administrative. I see action is requested tonight following the public hearing. Can you enlighten us on why? Generally, we like to do two reading.
Yeah, we're supposed to have our tip into the council of governments by the end of the month, but if you chose not to act, it could probably could go another, you know, three weeks or whatever it's going to take. I try to make it when they request it. Often, these don't make it in on time. They have to have it out of SCOG by the end of July, and they need some time to get all this cranked in, so that's the reason for doing this. It's quite labor-intensive to do this, in terms of each project has to be entered individually. What we do is, fortunately, there's a system that we can do online to enter these programs, and then they just have to review them and add them into the regional COG then, so... If you're comfortable with doing it tonight, as I mentioned, the changes are not major from the plan last year, other than the addition of the Northern State's impacts on Fruitdale.
I thought you'd come to that.
But if you're comfortable to act on it, that would be good. If not, then we'll survey and cope with that and go on, you know, next time.
And the other thing I see is the next resolution and the one on the suggested motion don't appear to match, so I'm not sure which is which.
Did they already assign the number to it, that 921?
They assigned a number, 921-Hash-15.
Is the number.
Oh, it's correct, okay.
They say 921-15, so I think they're okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion.
Oh, we got a public hearing.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So, if everyone's finished, I will open the public hearing at 9:39. I won't reread the instructions unless...
7:39.
Seven, yeah. That's why I said large font, Aaron. 7:39, and I won't reread those instructions unless somebody would like to hear them. Any public commenters?
Tony's quiet.
Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 7:39, and entertain any motions.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion. Move to adopt Resolution 921-Hash-15, a resolution adopting the six-year transportation improvement program for the city of Cedar Woolley, Washington, 2016 through 2021.
We have a motion by Councilman Galbraith and a second by Councilman Lembley to adopt Resolution 921-TAC-15, a resolution adopting the six-year transportation improvement program for the city of Cedar Woolley, Washington, 2016 through 2021. Any discussion?
I just, a couple comments generally around Jamison, and I appreciate adding the sidewalk project there. I think that covers through the tennis court, isn't it?
Yes, it does.
But I wonder why such a late date? Is it just because, I think, was it slated for 2018, or could be built sooner?
The, that little project for the piece to complete to Third Avenue is what you're talking about? Yeah, actually, we met with Tib, representative of our engineer, on last Friday, and we discussed those projects, and he suggested we apply for that under their sidewalk program this year. There's two small pieces that we're going to do together. There's a chunk where the APP used to be on Ferry Street that we'll apply with under their sidewalk program, and then we're going to add in that piece on Jamison as well.
Where the cars are, the car and fence?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. And we've discussed that with the school district already as well, and hope to partner with them on that. So, with luck, we'll be able to do that next year. That's our intention, to put it in with the application this year. And I didn't necessarily mention it, but Ferry Street is the overlay project we're going to apply for. We did last year. We weren't funded last year, but they have four times the money this year at the state level they did the last time they had a preservation project, so we're feeling fairly comfortable that we may be able to fund our overlay and the sidewalk projects as well, so, yeah.
Great. And then, last question is, with the intersection being improved at 9 and Jamison, or at least the roundabout putting in there and the traffic going through Jamison, I heard, maybe Aaron made a small comment, to adding more protections in that neighborhood, but I didn't see any listed in the projects itself. Is that something that would be listed there, or something that could be?
Yeah, it's kind of an engineering detail, those kind of things. I do have in the larger project list, the 2022 Beyond project for arterial improvements on Jamison. We've actually talked about that before.
That's the rebuilding and the sidewalks and all that?
Yeah, and we'd actually do it as a part of that, although, as you know, we're going to be, Aaron will be talking about this low-cost roundabout option we're looking at at Township and Dunlop. If that's successful, that's something that may well work on Jamison, and we don't have to wait to do a project to do that. They're relatively low cost.
Okay.
Anything else? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So now, we're on to unfinished business. Proposed amendment to the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code's Chapter 17.04 definitions and Chapter 2.90 consolidated planning procedures, and that is Jenna, I believe.
Thank you. Before you are two ordinances, and those ordinances essentially amend Chapters 2.90 and Chapter 1904. The amendments provide definition and clarification on processes to adopt planned actions, as well as review projects under planned actions. And as the council is aware, the planned action is being utilized as part of the process for the Northern State Campus Subarea Plan and Environmental Impact Statement. So, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Otherwise, these are procedural in nature. They are not substantive, but they'll provide us with a way to adopt planned action ordinances in the future and then review projects under those adopted planned action ordinances.
So, this is the same text as last time? Nothing's changed between last time and now?
That is correct.
So, this is a second reading, and I will entertain a motion. Actually, it requires two motions, one for each.
Each one?
Under requested action, it would be 1816...
1617.
I'm trying to find the amendment. Trying to find it.
Page 94. Page 95.
Can you take this? I have it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request, or would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 1816-15, amending Chapters 2.90 of the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code, and, or do I do it one at a time?
One at a time. One at a time.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilman Sandstrom and seconded by Councilman Galbraith to approve ordinance number 1816-TAC-15, approving amendments to Chapter 2.9 to the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. So, the next one would be 18...
17.
17.
17.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 1817-Hash-15 regarding amendments to Chapter 17.04 Cedar Woolley Municipal Code.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Galbraith, second by Councilman Carnegie, to approve ordinance number 1817-TAC-15, approving amendments to Chapter 17.04 to the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it carries unanimously. Thank you. Catch up here. I see no new business, unless anybody wants to bring some forward. We'll move to committee reports. Chief?
Other chief? We started to get some of our equipment in for the ambulance and the transportation process, so you know that this is part of the stuff that was approved through that agreement with the county. They purchased and supplied the tablets. This will allow us to do the billing through Medicare, Medicaid, LNI, private insurance will all be done through this or through the regular computer, but this is when we can do it directly in the field, and we'll take this to the hospital with us, and the patient will actually sign this for all the HIPAA regulations and everything. So, those items are starting to come through. The Fourth of July, in case someone asks you, the way we usually set this up, there were some questions, is why I bring this up, is we have seven vehicles that basically surround the parade route, staffed by about 20-plus members of the department, and so as calls come in, the vehicles may just stay in place until the duty officer decides which vehicle is in the best key location to get to it the easiest, causing the least amount of disruption to the events. So, this is what we've done in years past, and it seems to work well, and there will be the truck in the parade, so the survey's happy with that, so. Is there any questions about how we handle the Fourth of July? It is going to be a very dry Fourth of July. We're already starting to see the effects of that. The, maybe a little bit of a problem, too. We just got notice today that the State Fire Marshal's office may shut down due to the budget issues, so it's, it's an Olympia thing, I guess, so we'll, we'll keep on top of it, and hopefully, we won't have a need to have to call them in, so.
Thank you. John?
Building Department's been busy as can be. We've got a whole bunch going on, as I've been giving the council updates. It's just ramping up still. The planning department is, last week, we had a planning commission meeting where we talked about the buildable lands analysis and how, how the city's going to be able to manage the population and employment growth over the next 20 years. Other discussion that the planning commission had, they're looking to add additional, well, the buildable lands analysis is showing that we need to add a little bit of residential land and rather large chunk of either industrial or commercial land to the urban growth area, so they're looking at ways to accommodate that. Where can it go? So, they're going to be looking at, you know, additional industrial land. I'm going to give them a couple of scenarios, like, try to accommodate all of our jobs in an industrial base, which would require a lot more land, or a mix of industrial land and commercial land, which would shrink the amount of land necessary to add to our urban growth area. So, they're going to go over some scenarios at the next planning commission meeting. Long and short of it is, it looks like we're going to need to add some additional land to our UGA, whether we add it as industrial and/or commercial land, or whether that means we need to reallocate some land that's currently residential as industrial or commercial, and then add residential to the UGA in an area where there is no UGA right now. Urban growth area, I apologize, the UGA is the urban growth area. That's the boundaries of where the city anticipates to grow over the next 20 years. I apologize for using acronyms right out of the gate. These are really difficult questions that the planning commission and ultimately the city council are going to have to make. Where are we going to cite industrial land? It's always a tough question. We addressed that issue last year at the planning commission, didn't get very far. City council looked at what the planning commission had heard from the public and tabled it for now, but now, now is coming the time where we're going to need to accommodate additional industrial land or commercial land, or change our, change our outlook for how many jobs do we want to handle, try to accommodate. It's my understanding that the city council would like to accommodate as many jobs as possible in town, so ultimately, the planning commission and staff has been traveling down the path of trying to find ways to accommodate additional industrial and commercial land, because that's, that's so far what we've understood from the city council, and as long as that's, that's still the understanding, we'll continue down that path. So, they're going to be making some hard policy recommendations that would come to the city council in probably, probably a few months down the road still. One option is to, I could present some of this information to the planning, the city council planning committee, and get some further direction if the, if the council feels that that's something they'd like to have done, so we could schedule a meeting with the planning committee in the next few weeks, either ahead of or after the next planning commission meeting. It's entirely up to the council whether they hold a meeting, have a meeting with us to go over the buildable lands analysis and the options for expanding the urban growth area and locating industrial land. It might be, it might be helpful in the long run, but absolutely not necessary. The city council will be seeing the planning commission's recommendations eventually. I don't think they're going to be able to make any solid decisions at the next planning commission meeting in January, uh, January, July. I'm rushing the year along, excuse me. Brushing right past this wonderful summer we're having, I don't want to do that. So, in July, I don't expect them to have any solid recommendations, but if the planning committee would like to adjourn and go over some of these things before or after that meeting, let me know, we'll have to schedule it with you. So, that's, that's where we're at with the comprehensive plan update so far. Big questions? That's all I got.
Thank you, John. Jenna?
Certainly, just an update on the annexation process. We've been on hold for the past couple of months. The State Department of Enterprise Services is waiting for the end of the legislative session. Once that is complete, the budget is approved. They can then sign the final petition. That then takes some time for the county to certify. Once it's certified, give or take a couple of weeks, 30 days, I think, at the most. We'll bring it to the city council for action. You will hold a public hearing, and then make a decision on the annexation. Following that decision, it then goes to the state for a 30-day review process, so we have some time before it is complete. We probably won't see a complete annexation until early fall, so that's the update. We have received two signatures to the petition already, two residents along Fruitdale, so two of the five, which, which is nice. And the other three, we've reached out to them a number of times, and we've heard nothing from them.
The other, other things I wanted to mention to you, there is in your packet tonight an open house invitation for July the 8th. This would be before the July 8th council meeting from 5:00 to 6:30 for the Jamison Arterial Extension Project. The copy that's in your packets was written before we had our Spanish translator read the bottom part, so if that's important to you, that has changed. Anyway, we'll be mailing these out tomorrow. They're going to all residences and businesses within 500 feet plus or minus of the project alignment, plus, we reached out farther on Rhodes Road, because there'll be interest from the county residents out on that section of the road. And it'll go to the usual stakeholders and others, so look forward to doing that and invite your attendance at that. Other than that, we had the pre-construction conference for the Green Street project today, and they'll be starting construction on that right after the conclusion of the Lotta Rodeo ceremony or festivities and begin that sewer project. We have completed the grading for the new baseball field. Our crew did a great job on that, it's done kind of by two guys, with help from a couple of other departments, with truck drivers to move all the dirt from the piles behind the softball complex to re-level the field. I think we're going to have a world-class field out there when we're done. It looks really good, and a lot of things have happened yet. We've turned it over to the school district. They're putting in water lines, they'll be putting drainage in the infield, and shouldn't take much drainage in the outfield, we've got a good slope on it. And once they're done, we'll go back in and tune the grading up and, and get it ready for seeding. It should be ready for seeding by the end of July. Probably too hot to do it then, so we may wait until September, but that's the goal. We're actually meeting with the Bay Ruth representatives on the second to see how they're doing with the fencing and things like that, and make sure that everything's moving on that end of the thing as well. So, anyway, that's where we're at.
Aaron?
Couple items. We'll be doing radio testing on Friday for our new tower, so the repeater's in, it's been programmed, there's been a little bit of preliminary testing, but on Friday, we'll actually be going into Cascade Middle School to test its functionality within the four walls of the building. Mark mentioned it earlier, so I'll just mention it briefly. As part of our 2015 work plan, we're doing some work on Township. Basically, it's a chip seal project, so you've seen some pre-leveling and shoulder work so far. As a result of requests from neighbors, we have planned to install a traffic circle at the intersection of Township and Dunlop. This is a Seattle Department of Transportation sort of standard-spec traffic circle, so it's not a roundabout, it's basically a glorified planter box that sits in the middle of that intersection to provide a traffic calming effect. You all have heard probably more than I have requests over the years for speed bumps, speed humps, speed tables, or other devices. Those have always been fairly incompatible with the fire department's usage of the roadways, so we thought we'd try one, and that seemed to be a pretty reasonable intersection to try. It's a transition between 25 and 35 mile-an-hour speeds. It's a transition between city and county, so it's kind of a welcome to the city. We have people who cross the street and live here, so slow down a little bit. So, if you're curious to see any details, just let me know. I can show you, you know, what they look like, what the plans are. Otherwise, you can look to see it on the ground. What do you think, in September, August, September? Something like that. So, and the last thing I wanted to mention to you is, it's just a case that came out of the US Supreme Court last week, Reed versus the Town of Gilbert. We've got some work to do. The Town of Gilbert had some pretty comprehensive sign regulations, more so than we do, but not unlike ours, and they got a bit sideways with a, with a restriction that dealt with signage advertising events. And in this particular case, it was a church that moved from location to location every week. The Town of Gilbert allowed for signage to be out, I think, 24 hours before an event, had to be removed within an hour of the event ending. This particular church would get their sign removed in the afternoon on Sunday, rather than Sunday late morning, and Gilbert cracked down on them. They didn't appreciate that, took it through the federal system. Ninth Circuit felt that the town was okay. US Supreme Court on a nine-to-zero vote has really fundamentally changed sign regulations in the, in the United States of America. And so, what they found was that that particular sign was being treated differently on the basis of what was on it. Even though it applied to all classes of temporary signs, temporary signs were different than political signs, which were different than business signs. So, it wasn't, actually, it had nothing to do with the church or religious freedom or anything of that nature. It was the fact that there were different classes of signs treated differently, therefore, the court inferred that what was on the sign was, in fact, the distinction. So, in kind of wrapping it up, one of the opinions, and there's a plurality of opinions, essentially says, "The decision will not prevent governments from enacting effective sign laws. The town, Gilbert here, has ample content-neutral options available to resolve problems with safety and aesthetics, including regulating size, building materials, lighting, moving parts, and portability. The town may also be able to forbid postings on public property, so long as it does so in an even-handed, content-neutral manner. An ordinance narrowly tailored to the challenges of protecting the safety of pedestrians, drivers, and passengers might also survive strict scrutiny." So, the lesson, really, the defect we have, as I see it, is primarily with political signs. We have fairly comprehensive sign regulations. We do not regulate political signs, and as I understand this case, if we allow four-by-eight signs to be placed on state right-of-way, city right-of-way, or even anywhere, then really, it's Sally Bar the Door, because any business then can show up and pop their signs up anywhere they want as well. So, I'm not looking for anything from you tonight, I just want to leave you with, with the understanding that you will have some work to do, because our sign code currently would disallow, for example, off-premises signs for things like the Woolley Market, or the Gateway Golf Course, or anything, really, that have started sprouting up around town, Indian fireworks, whatever they are, all those. But, we've never regulated, you know, whoever it is is running for Congress, or state office, or whatever. This decision says that doesn't fly, so if you let one happen, you let them all happen. And of course, the impact on the aesthetics and all that are very significant, so we'll leave that for your thought.
You just get something to go on.
And no doubt, we'll, we'll probably want to work with a committee on how we want to tackle the problem, you know, because it's, it's challenging. I recognize right out of the gate that, you know, you're not going to be excited to tell candidates or supporters of candidates what they can or cannot do to support candidates. On the other hand, zero regulation of temporary signs all across town is not a very appealing option, so it'll be a tricky one to work through. And that's all I have, just have a happy Fourth of July, and don't forget, if it goes up or blows up, it is illegal here in the city of Cedar Woolley.
Patty?
Mark mentioned the Transportation Benefit District, and the $20 tab that Council in its role as Board of Directors of the district passed was effective for vehicles licensed after July 1st. Well, those bills have gone out, and the calls have started coming in. People are not real excited about it, but after I go through my spiel, they somewhat understand what's going on. I actually paid my $20 fee last month, because I wanted to see how long it took to go through the process, how quickly we would actually get the money. So, the bills have gone out, people have, some people have paid, but we have not seen any money yet, so I'll keep you informed on how that process works. Also in your packets is the annual impact fee report for the year ended December 31st, 2014. You are not required to take any action, I am just required to give it to you. It shows revenues and expenditures since 1998 of the three impact fees that the city collects. 1998 was the year that impact fees first were collected in our city. I would like to draw your attention to the transportation impact fees, which at the end of last year, the balance was zero. It's kind of hard to do too many new projects with zero dollars. I don't like to look at Mark when I say that. And so far this year, we've collected only $10,000 in impact fees, partially due to deferral, as well as prior credits that have been used to offset those. So, I believe most of the credits have gone away. So I believe most of the credits have gone away, so we might see a few dollars creep into that fund. Mark is quite good at matching federal money and state money with each other, but we still do need to come up with some local funds for transportation needs. We don't want to see that grant money go to someone else, we want to use it here in Cedar Woolley. And then last item, council passed a tax, a utility tax on domestic water in two thousand and fourteen at a six percent rate. State law allows an exemption of revenue that relates to fire support. The way the PUD interprets that law, they've reduced the tax by twenty percent. So when you, if you've looked on your PUD water bill, it shows city of Cedar Woolley tax, and then it shows PUD credit, which makes an effective tax rate of four-point-eight percent. So with the two payments that we've received from the PUD, they're still working out which residences are in the city and which aren't, and trying to tax only those in the city. I estimate by the end of the year, we'll be about thirty thousand dollars short of what we had budgeted. And these revenues are placed in the newly created council strategic revenue fund, and part of those monies were intended to be applied to the principal, an additional principal payment on the city hall loan with USDA, and the balance was to remain in that account for whatever purpose the council chose, either this year or in future years. So I just wanted to alert you to what the impact was of the credit being a bit larger than anyone had anticipated, and I'll continue to monitor that and let you know if it looks like the end result will be more or less than what I guessed tonight. That's it.
Thank you. Kevin?
I was going to say to Mark's comments about the city level on that field out there, they did an excellent job. I followed that along, so it's far superior to the field that's next to it. I've been doing a little bit more work on, we're trying to get ready for our skateboard challenge of September, we're trying to, so we can give away free hot dogs and hamburgers and, no sodas, but water and energy drinks and stuff like that. So it should be a pretty good event, and he's already advertising it. Skagit Speedway is going to up their trophy donation from three to nine, so everybody will get first, second, and third in three categories, so that's something that skateboards have never done. Apparently, when we did, we've done it the last two years, everybody loved it, so we're going to do three for each category, so. And we've gone through where our judging stands, we're going to try to move it, and so it ought to be a permanent event for years to come.
I was just going to say everyone have a safe fourth and enjoy La La Rodeo. Don't keep our fire department too busy. That's it.
Brenda? You?
Chief Tucker. I've seen a lot of local on Highway nine, and I'm, I myself and the people that live on Highway nine are appreciative of that. It slowed the traffic down. We still have the jake brakes on the semis that haven't figured out that they're not supposed to use those. But we've also had, and I wanted to mention, there's been a lot of state patrol presence.
Yes.
And I don't know why, I welcome it, but anyway.
They could have a coaching trip going through with a new guy, but the, one of the weights and measures guys went through there the other day, he got rear-ended by somebody. We had to go to an accident involving a state patrol vehicle, and the state patrol vehicle won. And Officer Eddie went up and hit the hill looking at the trucks. Didn't see a lot of the jake brakes, but you know, that's kind of part of the thing, is once we set up there for a while, it changes the behavior. So if it continues, our next step would be to get him grab my car, or detective car, be a little bit more sneaky, grab the escape, and just see if he can get up there under cover, just to see if that changes the dynamic. But we're trying to get him around, he does as much traffic as everybody else put together, and he's a great asset to us.
I was just, I was listening to their new device they're going to put at Dunlap in Township, and you know, I know it's highly-nined, but wouldn't that be a blessing if we could put that at the junction of thirty-five miles an hour versus fifty?
You could actually station one of Dean's vehicles there all the time, and they could hose the road off and pick up the bodies pretty regularly if we did that.
Yeah, that's all.
That would keep Dean busy.
Yeah.
And Todd. Well, and Rick too, depending on where things go, because he's been scrapping in town lately, so.
Anyway, thank you. It's been appreciated.
I'll pass that on, thank you, sir.
Rick?
Well, yeah, thanks to Boys in Blue, we did have an incident in front of the funeral home the other day, and they were there in just very, very timely manner to take over control of a uncooperative subject, so thanks to them, things turned out well.
We need to educate you before you do much more of that, so.
Toby, she was, yeah, she was all over that young lady. She wasn't, she wasn't going to take any of her crap, so. Talking with Jeannie, who is La La Rodeo president, saying that the La La Rodeo organization is trying to bring some new and more rides to the carnival, so tell family and friends and everybody you know to hit the carnival, that the more people they get there, the more stuff they're going to bring back again next year. So if they bring new stuff and more people come, that they'll bring more and better stuff next year, so go down and experience the carnival with their new activities and things. He said they're now, they're having only local nonprofit food vendors and things, so those groups will get a bigger share of the concessions and things, and they need to get carnival products there to fill in space, so they're going to bring in more, a couple more this year, I think, and the more people they get, the more they'll bring back. So everybody try to take in the carnival activities.
Brett?
Yep, the final planning, the fine tuning of La La Rodeo is almost done, so I guess I just want to mention, to pay you back on that, is carnival bracelets at our office are available, we're half a block away from Rick here. Save five bucks on your bracelet and you can ride all day long, so.
Okay, for our citizens, we're going to break here and go into executive session, the purpose of which is to review qualifications of a candidate for public employment under RCW forty-two point thirty point one-ten. It'll be about thirty minutes, you're welcome to stay and come until we come out. I don't think it'll be very interesting, but there is action required or requested at the end, so I will. Okay, we're back out of executive at eight fifty-three, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the creation of a seventeenth officer position for the Cedar Woolley Police Department.
Second.
Okay, I don't know who got that one first, but the motion by Councilman Sandstrom, the second by Councilman Carnegie, to authorize a seventeenth position for a uniformed commissioned police officer for Cedar Woolley Police Department. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We'll all stand.